I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda is the approval of the agenda items.
Move to approve the agenda, but February 16th, 2016, I guess presented. Second.
motion in the second, I'll say it right now.
Aye.
Proposed. Next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda items.
Move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion in the second, I'll say it right now.
Aye.
Proposed, motion carried. Next we have public participation. Okay, I guess we'll just move on to the report of the superintendent after this.
How is everyone tonight?
Robishing.
Had several notes of appreciation in your packet, one that I would like to point out though is a very nice letter from Mayor Grimminger, recognizing our faculty and students that helped with the flooding issue and moving people and all that occurred back in late December into early January. But, very nice letter and wanted to end with students and faculty members that participated in that. Bond issue project update, there's another bid package that is coming out in the next week or two and should be available for review and possible action by the board in March meeting. Been working with the architect on that. Also have been working with the successful bidders on the last bid package and negotiating some of the pricing and we're almost to a point where we've got that finalized and feel pretty comfortable with the final numbers that came out of that. Made some, a few changes here and there that helped to bring the cost down on that bid package, so we're pleased with that. Last Wednesday in January enrollment, you have that information in your packet as well. You have one sheet that shows a comparison of the September 30th enrollment and then also the January 27th enrollment. We have a total of 1,839 students as of that official count date in January. There's also a comparison that shows those numbers all the way back to the 98, 99 school year. One thing that I would point out is that basically our enrollment is steady with where we were last year, we're down five students overall in the January count. But that was, last year's number was up 44 students over the previous year. So, we kind of had a little increase in enrollment and it has held for this year as well, so that's, that's good. Reminder on kindergarten registration, coming up at St. Gene Elementary and Bloomsdale Elementary, April 2nd and April 9th. I don't remember the date they can call and make appointments.
March 14th.
March 14th. Parents of students that would be entering kindergarten can call the offices and make appointments for April 2nd at St. Gene Elementary and April 9th at Bloomsdale. Principal reports. Who's up first?
Go ahead.
Oh, ladies first.
I'll let this go.
Start in the middle.
Start in the middle. Well, I was fumbling to find things to put into the principals' report last month because we only had 13 days. This month we only have 11 and a half, so it's going to be a short week. We did, we were able to fit in the spelling bee. We had an alternate, Kristen Davis from 7th grade, third place was Brianna Watts from 7th grade, second place Dakota Arnold from 7th grade, and first place Erin Stacy from 8th grade. Those kiddos will compete in the MAJHAA Conference Spelling Bee at North County. It's always at North County, I think it's hosted by Kingston this year. On February 22nd, congratulations to those winners and good luck in the spelling bee. We hosted a sad movie night. If you're familiar with the old middle school gym and the new middle school gym, you know we have that projector in the old middle school gym and our kiddos tend to sit up in those old bleachers over there and we have to be pretty conscientious about walking around and it's just difficult to manage for middle school kids. So, we tried something new and we had a movie down in the new gym and we purchased a projector screen with the help from Stu Coen. And put it out in the middle of the gym and had the projector out there and it was fantastic because we got to open the concession stand, so we're going to try that from now on. It worked pretty well and the kids seemed to enjoy it, so. History fair, we attempted this past week. We're not exactly sure where that's going to go or how it's going to be judged, but I know our social studies teachers are really excited about it because last year, if you'll remember, we changed formats and went to a new format. So, we're going to work all that out hopefully tomorrow when we're back. Leader and me team, we had selected several teachers from the different core areas and non-core areas to go to St. Clair and they hosted us for a leadership day which they didn't have planned, they kind of Ms. Geisler called them and then they set up a special one so that we could come visit and we're just blown away by that. I know the elementaries are both doing a fantastic job with leader and me and I think both principals, Ms. Geisler, all of leader and me conference yesterday, today, and tomorrow and we're getting texts nonstop almost about how excited they are about bringing that information back, so that's continuing. National Junior Honor Society, star of the month this month is Logan Pfoff, son of Larry and Christina Pfoff. This is Logan's first year at NJHS, he was selected for the many hours he dedicated to sandbagging for the community over Christmas break, service to the chapter, and outstanding character, so congrats Logan. Fall sports wrapped up their seasons. 8th grade boys with 3 and 11 record, 8th grade girls 4 and 10 record. 7th grade boys and 7th grade girls both had a 13 and 2 record. 7th grade boys tied for first place in the conference and placed second in the conference tournament and 7th grade girls placed second in the conference tournament, so a very successful season there. Academic team was scheduled to get started two weeks ago, but we haven't yet had a meet, so that's going to be in the works this week as well. And St. Gene B Middle School feature staff teacher is also on hold because the voting hasn't been able to be accomplished, so. Everything's going to be pushed back, we'll have a lot next month.
You said that.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Diesel is at the leader and me conference, so she asked me to present the notes for our building. We had several pieces of student recognition. In January on the 26th, Michael and Ruth Dunn were both selected for do the right thing from our building. They attended the ceremony with their family members, Mrs. Guile and Mrs. Keeker, their classroom teachers, and Mrs. Diesel and Mrs. Diane Miller attended the ceremony as well. And Mrs. Diesel asked me to read the short write-up for them. It says, Ruth Dunn and her brother Michael Dunn definitely know how to do the right thing. Their parents have always taught them to give back to their community and help others less fortunate. One of their favorite activities for the past four years has been visiting and giving Christmas cards to the elderly at a large assisted living facility in Farmington. Last summer Ruth and Michael noticed that some of the kids at the school needed supplies. They wanted to help out, so their family came up with a plan. They shared the idea of collecting supplies with their family and friends and donations of backpacks and school supplies started to accumulate. Ruth and Michael then decided to sell water bottles at their mom's swap meet gathering each Sunday afternoon and used all the proceeds to buy more supplies to donate. Despite long hours and hot temperatures, Ruth and Michael stuck to their commitment and raised enough money to buy hundreds, hundreds of pencil boxes, glue sticks, notebooks, and binders. Their commitment to help didn't stop there. They visited the Deluge Walmart and the manager donated several backpacks and various school supplies. They visited yard sales and searched for new and very gently used items and they watched for back-to-school sales and brought more items to add to the collection. Ruth and Michael's generosity has helped many children in their school, St. Gene B Elementary, and their kindness and willingness to donate their time and money to help others is wonderful. Okay, so they went to that ceremony in St. Louis and they said it was amazing. Several students of the month were selected in January, they were chosen for habit number five, seek first to understand then to be understood, and they celebrated the luncheon on January 29th with Mrs. Grimminger and Mrs. Diesel. During the last two weeks of January, all 3rd through 5th grade students took the interim assessments in math and ELA. It provided good data for the teachers and it was good practice for the students of what they were going to face here in the next couple of months. When we are at school, our elementary students are having fantastic attendance. For the month of January, 1st grade had 97.73 percent attendance and 5th grade right now is in overall first place with 97.42 percent attendance and at this time, all grade levels have had an average of between 95 and 97 percent for the year, so outstanding attendance. We also hosted some events and activities in our building. We had the cheer clinic for preschool through 5th grade. Our students also participated in the 100th day learning activities collection that the FCC LA put on. Our building collected 650 items and Mrs. Jenkins' class was the winning class. We've also started as part of the leader and me, the student green team recycling. This program has been a huge success, right now it's only open to 5th graders. Almost every 5th grade student applied for the job, but only a handful were selected. They filled out applications and they went through the interviewing process and they had to sign a contract and they were selected for their attitudes of dedication to the environment and willingness to give up their recess time to take care of the building recycling needs. In early February, we had the band and choir recruitment at the pack. Mrs. Alders and Mrs. Jokers do a great job of recruiting our students. And just recently, this last weekend, we had the PTA vendor fair, we had over 27 vendors, most of them were local. And we had some teachers collaborating with BLEL and during their 80-minute common plan times, the December focus was preparing for math and analyzing our slow data. And we also had some MRI trainings in early February. Franklin Saxon?
I want to start by going back to something I left off last month. It had just happened and I had it in my mind and forgot to talk about it, but a special congratulations to Ben Nagger and Taylor Warner for winning the Gatorade Cross Country Runner of the Year award, for those who aren't familiar with that. That is the top state cross-country runner in each of those categories. So, Mr. Mooney always talks about district band and the complexity to that is you dump everybody in the state into one pool and you draw from that and that's kind of what these two have done. Everybody in the state, we pulled the top in both categories, so I just think that is absolutely phenomenal. I'd like to give a thank you to Mrs. Stafford, Ms. Geisner, and Ms. Johnson for continuing to peder through the weather to try to provide a book fair to our students. I think it's about two weeks in running so far and hopefully we'll run for about another in the upstairs library. We had a weight meet at Perryville and the medal winners were Damian Kiefer, Nick Robinson, Thomas Oder, Austin Karen, Nick Bowling, Levi Dawns, and Logan Doughty. The big thing here is that Austin Karen and Logan Doughty both set meet records for their squad, 505 and 410 is what those weights were. We're also pleased to announce that Morgan Schenk signed a letter and intends to play football college at MS&amp;T and the thing about that that I think is so phenomenal, if you know Peach, is it's not only going to give him an opportunity to play football, but it's just an insanely great school and it's probably a wonderful fit for him, so I couldn't be more excited for him for that. Congratulations to Sarah Fisher for being chosen our next superstar. She will be one of 21 superstars at the 2016 Night of Superstars event this year at the River City Convention Center, so I want to give a big congratulations to Sarah for that. Congratulations go out to Dr. Atherton, Mrs. Stafford, and the FCC LA members who participated in the region six star events in Cape Girardeau. Earning a bronze was Jenna Papin. Silver ratings were Bailey Heil, Jennifer Burr, and Ashley Kreider. Gold ratings in advancing the state were Gracie Tommier, Jane Bowman, Rachel Bowman, Caitlin Bloom, Caitlin App, Haley Winston, and Sally Greysaber. Earning the top regional score in advancing the state competition were Pyle Catell, Darren Brown, Brooke Martin, Bethany Beckett, Michaela Bader, Deandra Boland, Erica Matthews, Abby Bates, Selena Kreitler, Kelsey Schmidt, Kristen Schrum, and Allison Bova. And if all of that weren't enough, earning a perfect score were Vivian Vaughn, Addie Steagle, Gabe Harmon, Abby Stolzer, and Nicole Bowman. So FCC LA had an amazing run there, so I want to congratulate them. Since the last board meeting, we had our snow coming activities during the week of January 25th through 29th, which I want to point out, this was probably one of the few years that we ran the snow coming and that was the full week of school that we actually had. Normally that snows us out and we're done, but that happens to be the one big one so far. Throughout the week, teachers voted for the court based on spirit and our court members were the king candidates were Gabe Harmon, Dalton Geisler, Brandon McKenzie, and Thomas Ingleman and the queen candidates were Mallory Kohler, Taylor Warner, Amy Hook, and Ashley Vias. The king was crowned Thomas Ingleman and the queen was Taylor Warner. I'd like to also congratulate Mrs. Google and Ms. Yuzel and the SGHS competitive speech debate team as they competed in Springfield. There were more than 400 students from 36 schools down at that competition. It just goes to show where they're really kind of trying to work their way out there and get in with those bigger competitions. And Brooke Wyler won a fourth place in the novice division of Lincoln Douglas Debate of over 100 competitors. So we were really impressed with her and Madison Drews had a really strong showing, winning three of the four rounds for her as well. Congratulations to Coach Bonnell and the entire Dragons Wrestling Team for winning their 12th straight district championship. The state qualifiers are Nathan Geisner, Grant Stafford, Jared Humble, Wyatt Hawn, Wade Hawn, and Kate Jet. The individual wrestling district champions are Wes Dickens, Wade Dickens, Austin Burr, and Gabe Harmon. And we'll be doing our wrestling send-off tomorrow morning, probably around 10 o'clock. I'd also like to congratulate our second quarter kindness award winner of Mallory Kohler. Mallory was recognized for being a mentor for younger students and an exceptional friend to all, going back to what we talked about. That sort of epitomizes that team and that group of seniors that we have. Also, very recently, congratulations to Mrs. Bader, Dr. Smith, and the entire SGHS FBLA organization for another amazing effort to qualify members of the state competition. I'll explain why here in a minute, I'm smiling about this one. State qualifiers were Dylan Burp, Brandon Crump, Nicole Bowman, Chris Hobbs, Kristen Schrum, Caitlin Grass, Claire Fisher, Tess Bowman, and Austin Schwint. First place Nicole Bowman, Selena Kreitler, Kelsey Schmidt, Josie Toomes, Caitlin Kreitler, Brandon Crump, Tess Bowman, Brooke Hasty, Abigail Stolzer, Cody Goodrich, Alexis Duncan, Vivian Vaughn, Austin Schwint, and Josh Warner. And I smile about that because last year when we set budget, Ms. Bader had a really good year last year and she put in that plus about 10 percent more and she put a little note on her budget and I passed it on to Dr. Lindsay basically saying, this is what we're asking for, but we really don't think that we're going to need that because last year was such an outstanding year and actually I think we're going to, yeah, exactly. You know from the list where I'm headed with that doc, so I'm just going to apologize right now. And finally, SGHS resumes its names of A and B honor roll. And what I'm really proud of there is that if you tally them all up, we have over 300 students on our A and B honor roll, which is roughly 50 percent of our student population. 167 on the B honor roll, 141 on the A honor roll. And I'm just really proud of that and it goes back to the state and I say all the time that we have great kids because we have great parents and it's our community and that's just a reflection of what they do and what it enables us to do. So, that's the report for the high school, thank you.
Thank you guys. Next, we have safety reports.
We haven't had any safety girls. We have no safety reports.
We'll move on to new business, the amended budgets. Oh my gosh, probably the biggest.
The unfinished.
The unfinished, yeah. Okay, first on the unfinished, I wouldn't come back to that, I have to. First on the unfinished, we'll go to the instructional program presentation, who knows?
And actually, maybe you skipped it for a reason. Because due to us not being in session today, they are not here for the instructional program presentation, so we'll probably double up next month.
Next month.
And we'll get a doubleheader next month.
Okay, we'll just move on to the school calendar.
School calendar, you have in your packet a copy of the school calendar along with some comments. You have one copy that's kind of been scribbled on and that sort of thing and then you have a couple pages of comments and then you have a clean copy of what the committee is proposing for tonight. Basically just a little reminder of the process and kind of the issues that we knew that we had to address. The first step in the process is to take the current year calendar and roll it over to the new, the new year using corresponding dates. And when we did that, we knew that there were a couple fairly significant issues. One was some issues with Christmas break and how all that was going to fall. And then the other issue was that school, the scheduled start date of school was the Friday of Juror Fest. And so we knew that those two things were significant issues. So, when we put the initial calendar out for comment, we kind of pointed those things out and asked our teachers that were making comment to kind of focus on those areas and anything else that they wanted to add. One thing I did notice is that we had fewer comments this year than what we've had in the past, which I think is an indication of the overall satisfaction with this year's calendar. So they didn't feel the need to make as many comments as they have in the past. But their comments were really helpful in kind of the next step in the process and that's when the committee came together, we looked at a couple options to solve the issues that we knew that we already had. Starting on Juror Fest weekend, on that Friday, and then also the Christmas break issue. So we looked at two main ways to solve it. We looked at one calendar that would just roll the start date later by a week. So instead of starting on August 12th, we would start on August 19th. So we kind of played with that calendar a little bit and realized that it must be really cut into Christmas break or Easter break or something, that we would have makeup days that would be after Memorial Day. And I think the overwhelming response that we've had from faculty and from parents is that they really like all the makeup days being on the end of the calendar year, so they know that there's a day off scheduled in the calendar, that it's actually a day off scheduled in the calendar. So, we didn't really see that as a possibility if we rolled it all the way to the 19th, which this district has for a while, had traditionally had a start date on a Friday. So we started looking at other options and what came out of the committee was to begin classes on Tuesday, August 16th. You can see the how new teacher induction and orientation and registration and in services and open houses. We were able to get all those in between August 1st and August 11th, which would allow faculty and staff to be off on the Friday of Juror Fest and then also be off on the Monday after Juror Fest. And then we would start classes with students on Tuesday the 16th. That does allow us to maintain that Thursday, Friday, Monday break at Easter. Christmas holiday would begin on Wednesday, December 21st. We would return with a professional development day on January 3rd and students would return on January 4th. And that was another idea that was put forth through the comments. There are several districts in our area that do that, where they come back the first day of January or the first day that they come back in January is a professional development day and then the students return on the next day. Everything else is pretty standard. All the makeup days are scheduled on the end of the calendar and even if we were to miss and have to make up all of the 10 days, we would still be out prior to Memorial Day. Thought the committee spent a lot of time really considering the comments, the options, and it was a unanimous recommendation to go with the calendar as it's presented. Like I said, if you want to see the clean copy, that would be the last two pages under that item in your packet. Do any of you have any questions or concerns or any items for discussion?
Usually it's for discussion.
This takes forever, but.
I would recommend you adopt the calendar as the committee presents.
I move to approve the 2016-17 school calendar as presented. Second.
Motion in the second, I'll say it right now.
One thing I did fail to point out, if you don't mind, I'll add it now. This calendar also sets the graduation date for May 20th at 8:00 PM. That was a very popular decision that was made by the board last year for this, for the current calendar year. You know, it's one of those things where depending on how much weather you miss, you know, it could be a good thing or a bad thing, but I think allowing parents and family members or graduates to be able to plan ahead and book flights instead of coming in for out of town, I think that's a real plus. And the committee felt like it was important to be there.
And we'll move on to new business, which is the amended budget.
You have a copy of the proposed amended budget. In front of you, the, really by this time of year, there's been a lot of changes to the budget. So there's been, gone through the budget, line item by line item, made some adjustments based on additional information that we've received. So, you know, there's been a lot of movement up and down on both revenues and expenditures. If you actually compare line items with this budget to the budget that we adopted in June, then you would see that. I think the single biggest change in the budget has to do with assess valuation. Of course, the original budget was presented in June. At that point, you're making a guess on what the actual assess valuation is going to be. And in our case, you know, take a look back at the last 15 years or so, look at reassessment years and non-reassessment years and do an average. So, when I looked back at the last 15 years or so and looked at reassessment years like this one, the average increase was about seven and a half percent. I didn't trust that number, so I budgeted 4 percent and it actually came down to about 2 percent. So, having that small of an increase in a reassessment year certainly had an impact on the budget. So that was the single biggest contributing factor to the amended budget. If you'll turn to the final page of the budget, and as I put in the budget letter, you know, several changes have been made. Leads to a negative adjustment on the overall balance projections for operating funds, which are the funds, funds 1 and 2 that are most important to Department of Development and Secondary Education. And really it's the, that's the area of the budget that operates the programs and services that we provide for kids. But, I will tell you that my overall position on budgeting is a pretty conservative position, so there is contingency money built into the budget. So I feel comfortable with what I'm presenting to you. If you do turn to the last page, you'll see Fund 1, projected balances would show If you do turn to the last page, you'll see Fund One, projected balances would show a decline in projected balances of about $236,000. We do have, you know, balances that we can use for these kinds of things. And again, with contingency money that's built in, this is kind of a worst-case scenario, if you will, as far as with the operating funds, Fund One and Fund Two. Fund Three and Fund Four, we knew that we were going to deficit spend by a large amount because we had revenues that came in in the last fiscal year that are being spent in this fiscal year. So last year, we saw huge increases in the balances for Fund Three and Fund Four, and then this year, we're spending those balances. Fund Three, if you remember, we did an advanced refunding of a previous bond issue that saved the district about $209,000 in interest. That bond issue is not actually callable until next month. So when we did the advanced refunding, that money went into an escrow account, so it showed up in our balances last year. We're going to make that payment in March this year, and like I said, again, it saved the district over $200,000 in interest to do that. But we're deficit spending this year because of that. Same thing with Fund Four. The bond issue was approved last April, which was in the last fiscal year. We got the bond proceeds in May, if I remember right. So we saw a significant increase in our Fund Four balances last year, and then we are spending that money this year as we continue bond issue projects. So I'm not at all surprised by the Fund Two and Fund Four deficits. And actually, if you go back and look at the original budget, they were projected in that budget as well. So overall, I feel very comfortable with the budget. I feel like we do have the contingency money built in there. It's likely we will finish in a better position than what I'm showing with the amended budget. Do you have any questions at this point? Again, taking a very conservative approach on both revenues and expenditures. Now, at this point, we just have more information than we have back in June.
I move to approve the amended budget for the 2015-16 school year as presented.
Sir.
A motion in the second, I'll vote against.
Aye.
Opposed? Special comments? Next, we have the CSIP.
Dr. Slate? Um, I've come to unite with, tonight with an updated conference of school improvement plan. The team met on Thursday, February fourth to review the updates on the data and some suggestions that I had. And the way that whole process works is I meet with them as an entire group, and it's a group of students, parents, employees, board members, and community members. And we meet as a whole group. I go through the updates on the data, show them the suggestions that I have, and then we break into four work groups to review the individual goals, the strategies, and the action steps that support that. So they spent, oh, about thirty, forty-five minutes working in their work groups, going through each item, talking through the whole process. So it takes a couple hours for the CSIP committee to get through everything. But tonight, here are the changes. Real quick, I'm just going to run through some of the information to kind of give you an idea of the things that we looked at and what the goals specifically address. On page one, I did some updates. The first is at the top on grades served. It has always said kindergarten through twelfth grade. I updated that because we do have a strategy in here for our preschool program, so I made that grade served pre-K through twelve. It seemed like a good time with the addition of our MDP grant to go ahead and do that. I added a date and time for the school improvement team meeting. That'll help remind me when we do it. I updated the team members. Every year, those change, and that's a good thing for new people to get a look at our CSIP and see how well we're doing as a district. And I also added a small table of contents at the bottom of that first page to kind of make it a little bit easier if you're trying to find some information. I really like a table of contents. Pages two through eight contain the data for our CSIP. Page two begins all of the MSIP five performance data. This is academic achievement, subgroup achievement, graduation, attendance, and our college and career readiness information. So that's all in that first section there. Page five begins internal and external factors that we identify and have goals and strategies set for, things such as how many of our teachers have advanced degrees, percentage of parents attending parent-teacher conferences, some information on our library and technological... There's all kinds of information, and again, those correlate back to strategies and goals that we have set within the plan. The plan has five main goals. The first one begins on page nine. Goal one is, it addresses building classroom leadership. This goal basically outlines expectations and professional development for teachers and administrators. Page thirteen begins Goal Two, and Goal Two is about our collaborative culture here at St. Jen, and it identifies the strategies and steps that the district will take and its commitment to promoting and using a collaborative culture to improve student performance. Goal Three begins on page fifteen, and this is our largest goal. It's about curriculum, instruction, and assessment. This goal basically outlines the necessary steps to develop quality curriculum, instructional programs, and assessments to improve performance and enable students to meet their personal, academic, and career goals. Page twenty-one is Goal Four, and it addresses our technology. And this goal identifies the district's commitment to provide and maintain appropriate technology resources for instructional purposes and support services here on the campus. And our last goal is Goal Five. It's on page twenty-five, and it addresses safety, facilities, and community involvement, and it assures that the district will maintain functional, safe facilities, and promote, facilitate, and enhance parent, student, and community involvement. Through the CSIP process this year, there are some areas that we know we need to investigate further. The first one is our mission statement. We know that we need to review it and possibly make some changes. It's just that time to review it. So we have already put out a survey to the R2 employees to kind of gauge their understanding of the mission statement, so we're starting to gather that data and we'll work through that process. We know that we need to update the national education technology standards. Those have changed, so we're trying to determine if we go with the change standards or if we create our own technology standards for students, teachers, and administrators. We need to explore partnership opportunities with universities, so we can possibly offer classes here on the R2 campus for our teachers and other teachers in our community. And we are also discussing the possibility of updating and changing our late start programs for middle school and high school. So those are all things that we know we're going to address this spring, this fall at some point. We're still working on it. So those are the updates and the changes to the CSIP, and I don't take any questions if you have any, though.
This, the completion of this is twenty eighteen for the most of it?
It used to, we left it twenty eighteen because we used to, every year, they would update the date of completion, and the thought process is in twenty eighteen, we'll really dig in and see if these are strategies and action steps that still need to be in the plan, or if they need to come out, or if they need to be changed, or if we just continue with the completion date.
I move to approve the revisions to the CSIP as presented.
Sir.
A motion in the second, I'll vote against. Opposed? Motion here. Mr. McDaniel?
I move that the Board of Education hold a closed meeting with closed record and closed vote following the regular open meeting on March fifteenth, two thousand sixteen in the R2 Comms Library, seven fifteen, Washington Street, St. John's, Missouri, for the purpose of discussing and voting upon the following types of business: legal action, processes of action, or dedication; lease, purchase, or sale of real estate; hiring, borrowing, disallowing, or promoting particular employees; proceedings involving the mental or physical health of an identifiable individual; scholastic probation, expulsion, or graduation of identifiable individuals; testing and examination materials; welfare cases of identifiable individuals; preparation, negotiation with employee groups; software codes for electronic data processing and documentation thereof; specification for competitive bidding until approved or published; steel bids and related documents until the bids are opened; steel proposals and related documents and law proposals are rejected; turning documents related to a negotiated contract until the contract is executed; individually identifiable personnel records, promulgating the records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment; records protected from disclosure by law; scientific and technological innovations of which the owner has proprietary interests; records relating to municipal guidelines established for the reporting of abuse and wrongdoing; confidential or privileged communication with an auditor; operational guidelines, policies, and specific response plans for preventing or responding to a critical incident; existing or proposed security systems and structural plans of district property; the portion of a record that identifies security systems or access codes; records that identify and would allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption of configuration of components or the operation of computer, computer system, computer network, or telecommunications network; credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical and virtual keys, access codes, or authorization codes that are used for technical electronic transactions. I further move that notice in this meeting and attend to the agenda we posted required by law.
Sir.
Have a motion, second call, Eric Walter?
Yes.
Dave Bova?
Yes.
Charlie Crowder?
Yes.
Joe Doughty?
Yes.
Karen McDaniel, yes.
Yes.
Rick Hoodlaw?
Yes.
Motion carried six oh. Have a look.
Move to go to closed session with closed record and closed vote after a short break.